There he is.
One other real quick, quick housekeeping reminder for just for everybody. Because of our proximity to the trains, you might make sure you're on mute unless you're speaking or asking a question. Just came up the other day at another meeting. So just to have it on your radar screen.
Cool. Well, is it about that time?
Yes, sir.
Well, welcome everybody to the 23rd of February 2021's regular commission meeting. I hope that everybody had an opportunity to enjoy some of that sunshine today. And that's just a little glimpse of spring coming down the corner here for us. So with that, we will go ahead and start this evening's agenda with item number one. To consider the meeting minutes of February 9th, 2021 and February 18th, 2021's agenda review.
After reviewing those, I make a motion that we approve the minutes for February 9th and February 18th of 2021.
A second.
We have a second, Mike Cathy. Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no opposed, that passes. Regular agenda, item number two, receive an application for the use of East Sixth Street parking lot on March 13th or March 20th as an alternate backup date. Denise?
Sure. I received a application from Norm Odin to, for the Newton Farm and Art Market to have a art market, a winter outdoor art fest and farmer's market on March the 13th as, and a backup date is March 20th. If that 13th doesn't work, they've kind of made it so it would be around spring break and also around Easter and everything. This is because you adopted that policy, this would be a they would have to come back to ask for permission because it's not during that April and October timeframe. So it's up to you whether you would like to approve this or, or not.
Very good.
I would make the motion that we approve the request for that date by that group.
I will second it.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, that motion passes. Item number three on this evening's agenda is to consider an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 1 of the code pertaining to the requirements and placement of the fire department connections. Chris, you going to take that one?
Yeah, I can cover this one quickly, Mayor. Chapter 10, Article 1 is essentially the international fire code. We refer to it as the IFC. It's a book that has regulations for fire prevention and fire protection services. And it's essentially uniform code. Then the city will make certain amendments to that, and then that amended version serves as the city's fire code. This came before you on the request from the fire marshal. Certain provision that you'll find, we've outlined it in the memo, but it's 903.3.7. That included a local amendment that made things a little bit more restrictive. He felt comfortable with the standard version, so that's what this ordinance accomplishes. It's essentially just reverts to the IFC published version of that 903.3.7, which deals with just the placement of fire service connections. This is a preview to a much more substantive update on the IFC. That book comes out every three years. So we may update with either the 18 or the 21 version. The fire marshal will go through that in detail and have a more significant ordinance. But this is one that he feels comfortable with in the interim as a change that provides some flexibility. I would stand for any questions on this. It is somewhat into the weeds, but we thought we would put that before you because it may be a few months before we have the full IFC update. This is in the form. Of course.
Kind of more theory or, and we may not have the answer for it. We value our fire rating in this community. Our businesses rely on that for, for good ratings on their insurance, not so much on residential ratings, but it still does matter. Would this have a potential negative effect on that? Does anybody want to take that?
I don't think so. Several of the things that they're trying to accomplish, as I understand it, is there is some contradiction in city code and fire code. We've ran across a couple of them having some development discussions just yesterday. And so they're trying to clean some of that up so that we don't have contradictions in the two different codes.
And Mayor, if I may, I don't know the answer for certain. I defer to Suzanne. She's experienced on that. But I would say that I, I would say that we're reverting to the standard. We're not taking any lesser, you know, standard than what's published in the IFC. So it'd be hard for me to imagine, but I can't say that definitively what effect it would have on the rating.
Thank you.
And if you.
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if you do have any concern on that, we can surely look into that and report back. We'll report back regardless, but happy, happy to table it if that's a, if that's a concern.
Is Chief Roberson here tonight? I talked with Andy last night. I really appreciated his very thorough explanation of this. And he wanted to do so because he couldn't be here tonight. So I didn't know if Chief Roberson, I think it is, was going to be here, I thought.
There he is.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, yes, I am here to answer Mayor Stenit's question. This will have absolutely no effect on our ISO rating for the city. As Chris alluded to, this is just referring back to the international fire code, the IFC on a national level. They have kind of a home rule policy that you can be more restrictive at home rule, but you can't be less restrictive. And this is just falling back to the larger umbrella standard that's set forth on a national level.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
I would make a motion that we accept the change in the ordinance. Do we need a, is there a numbers, anything that we need like that? Or I have a train, I'm at my shop, I have a train driving by now, so you guys do too.
Yeah, real quick, it's a 5035-21.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance 5035-21.
I will second that.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, ordinance passes. Item number four, Suzanne, give us an update on recycling, please.
I thought I'd missed it, but he blew the horn. Yes, Commissioners, it's been about a year ago since we discussed recycling and made some changes to our program. And what we did is we changed everything, if you recall, so because they were having problems out at the Harvey County Recycling Facility. And they were getting too many non-recyclables in the recycling stream, which was making the little bit of recyclables that they had that were marketable, unmarketable, because they had too much waste in the recycling stream. And so they changed some of the rules out there and said that if you could not keep it down to under 10% of non-recyclables in that recycle stream, then we would receive a $350 fine for the truck that was bringing it in, our municipal truck, and it could be rejected for 30 days. We, we started out and then you made the decision, we would go ahead and we would keep recycling, but it would be a voluntary program. And we have, at any given time, you know, this number changes all the time because our customer base changes because people come and go. And we have about 7,000 sanitation customers approximately. And we started with about 2,600 folks that wanted to recycle. As of last Friday, these numbers are even newer than what I put in your, in your memo. We have we have had to disqualify 906 people as of last Friday for having too many non-recyclables on too many occasions in the recycle stream. And so we have about 2,070 people that are recycling and about 3,832 that are not. And what we are, we are continuing to watch this. We have somebody that is, we actually have somebody that looks at every recycling cart to determine if there are too many recyclables or if there are any non-recyclables in that cart. And then we will leave a note for the customer. If they have had three violations, then we remove them from the program. There have been, it's typically three to four depending on the violations. And I think that the program is working because our recycle stream is, is very clean at this point. The rejected loads that we received were, were in the first month of last year, which was before we started doing the individual inspections. And at this point, if you look at the waste, I've tried to give you a few charts in your packet that shows we had been recycling around 1,500 tons approximately per year. We're down to about 400. And remember, this is being driven by the market because if those recyclables, there is no market for those recyclables, then the recycling facility doesn't want those items and they have to have it very clean. The tons of solid waste has increased from around 5,000 tons up to around 6,700 tons. So everything that was being recycled is now not being recycled. The offset you see in the numbers, if you will. Staff anticipates that we're going to need to replace a truck, but we did a pilot program. We started it at the beginning of this month and I have good information to report. As of the end of last week, we believe that we're going to be able to continue picking up recyclables with just one recycle truck. So we are not going to need to replace at this point in time, which gives us some time, us being the city of Newton, time to determine where we will go for 2022. And that's going to also be dictated a lot by how Harvey County decides to handle recyclables. And of course, they're going to make their decision based on waste connections that runs the facility and based on the market for recyclables. So at this point, I think we're doing good because we can continue to use one truck and we don't need to replace it at this point in time. And then we will continue to do inspections of the recycle stream so that we don't have any trucks that are rejected. This did have an impact on the budget, but we anticipated that going in on our sanitation budget. It was about a $15,000 increase because it's a little bit more expensive for us to take items to the transfer station as opposed to the recycling facility. But what I am hearing from county staff is they are expecting the tipping fees for recyclables to increase significantly. Along with that, I believe that just trash tonnage in general, the cost is going to increase. Because you can't just increase recyclables and not trash because then it doesn't make sense. You may as well just go ahead and switch over and take your recyclables to the transfer station. It's not going to be more. And if it, if it is, then we should make a decision. Are we going to continue to recycle? And if there's not a market, why would we increase that cost to our customers at this point? Those individuals that have been pulled out of our program because they were having too many non-recyclables in the recycle stream can still take their recyclables to the recycling facility on their own. And the county does not charge them to do that, but they are just doing spot inspections on those recycle loads that are brought in for those who feel very strongly about wanting to continue to recycle. Do you have any questions?
Yeah. Go ahead, Rod.
I've had three or four people contact me that, you know, you always get that, you know, it says on it that it's recyclable, but, but, but they don't accept it and I always explain that to them. But, but what's, what's the major offensive material being thrown away? Is it stuff that's dirty or, or of the, of the violations? Do you have a feel for, for? You know, is it, is it a complicated fix or is it a simple fix or, or just, just what?
Well, it varies. It really does vary. A lot of times bags, plastic bags are an issue. That's something that just ever since we started the program has been an item that people are confused about. And we've done all kinds of public education and we, we check with our, with our drivers and our folks that are inspecting those loads from time to time. And if we see a real pattern and they'll let us know as well. And then Erin will start running, you know, some public education ads to tell people, hey, this isn't recyclable. I think a lot of people get really confused because on a nationwide basis, you know, everybody, it's been drilled into their heads that certain things are recyclable. Just because it is recyclable doesn't mean that they are recycling it here.
Right. It is, if we, I had somebody recommend to me and I didn't have an answer, so I'm glad we're talking about this tonight. He, he said, what if we only did paper and glass? Would that, would that simplify things? Or would that just, you know, defeat its own purpose?
Yeah, I think it would certainly simplify things, but there is a percent of the population that very much wants to recycle the plastics too. And again, and it's all about the market and what the recycling facility operators are, are saying that they will take it at any point in time. And that's driven by the county. Remember, we don't have control over the recycling facility.
Yeah. So even if we wanted to change recycling vendors, we'd have to ask the county to do it.
Yeah, that, that's, they are the ones that operate the land, any of the transfer station, the old landfill and the recycling facility. And they have the contracts with the operators for those facilities. And we don't want to take that on.
No.
Thank you. Really is a when in doubt, throw it out type of a situation being that we don't accept everything that says recycling on it.
That's what I've been doing. I got, my one violation was for, for, you know, the plastic bags.
Yeah.
Mine was for the soda pop case and the plastic on the soda pop that holds the six packs is on the tray.
Yes. We will continue to keep you updated. I'm sure we'll have more discussions about this as we go into the budget process as well.
Vice Mayor, did you have a question, sir?
Rod asked all the questions I had, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Actually, I do have a comment if I can make one. Just maybe another education aspect, and this seems to get missed, is that if people have questions, call the sanitation department, ask your questions. I see so many comments and stuff, and I don't know that this is, I'm just saying for anybody that may be watching, or maybe the newspaper will put this in an article or something. But I see so many comments, people are going to Facebook to try to get their questions answered about their recycling issues. And it's like, call sanitation and ask them. They're the only ones that are going to be able to tell you why yours, why your recycling wasn't picked up, why your lid changed colors, why you got a notice and you didn't know there was something. I mean, like call the department. Facebook is not going to solve your recycling issue for you. So I, this, Erin, if we can communicate that somehow to the people, let's do it because that's, do not go to Facebook to try to get your questions answered and call sanitation department, whatever that number is. So.
That number, if you would like to call and ask questions.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you.
That's a good commercial release, by the way.
Yeah, say it again, Suzanne. People are getting ink pens right now.
All right. If you have questions about your recycling or your carts or any, anything associated with a solid waste collection program here in the city of Newton, you can call the office at the service center and the number there is 316-284-6070.
And the ladies that answer the phone are wonderful. They will help you with any questions you have.
They are. They, they are full of information and they're really sweet to talk to.
And sometimes there are just mistakes and it gets missed. They will come back and pick it up if that's the case. It happened at my house one day. So yeah, just call.
And we do not take great joy in, in messing up your trash.
No. No.
No fun for anyone.
Thank you, all of you who work so hard on this issue.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thanks.
Very good. Item number five on this evening's agenda is to consider participation in the federal fund exchange. You want to kick us on that too, Suzanne?
Yes, Commissioners, this is an annual program that we consider. And the federal fund exchange program, our funds that are passed down from the federal government to the Department of Transportation at the state level. And those funds, if we, if we wanted to get a dollar for a dollar, then we run through the state and we have to put out project plans and specifications. Did I catch up? That, okay, project plans and specifications that meet those federal guidelines and/or state guidelines. What we have been doing and it has worked very well for us is we have been doing the federal fund exchange where we get 90 cents on the dollar. And we utilize these funds for all of our street maintenance programs. Typically, we're using those to help pay for annual mill and overlay programs. And the reason that we do this is because when we can utilize our own specifications, there's a reduction in the environmental documents. Plans and specifications are intended to meet our local needs, not at a federal or state level. And it, it allows for us to stretch that dollar a little bit farther. And we've been very happy with the program and it has helped us really prop up our street maintenance program here in Newton. In 2021, the funds that are available for exchange are $260,511.44. At that 90% exchange rate, we would receive $234,460.30. Staff would recommend that we do enter the program and would ask that you authorize us to sign the associated agreements and documents as they become available. Do you have any questions?
I move that we accept that program for 2021 and participate in this exchange.
I have a second.
And we need, do you need a second? Motion to receive the authorization to do that or?
I think we could do it all in one.
Okay.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to participate in the federal fund exchange and authorize staff to sign off, off on those documents. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, none, the motion passes. Very good. Alrighty. Item number six, receive bids and award contract for tree trimming program. You're just awful popular tonight, Suzanne.
We've, we've got a lot of things that are, we're rolling out here, which is a good thing for the community. The, if you recall back in January of 2019, we started talking about beautification programs here in the city of Newton. And one piece of that was the potential tree trimming program. We talked about it because of all of our environmental calls to our environmental control officer, the, the greatest number of calls and complaints that we receive are based on the tree trimming violation notices. And so what we had proposed to do in the budget process last year was to to go ahead and fund the tree trimming program. For each year, we would have enough funds in the park budget to, estimated, mind you, funds to trim the trees, that tree canopy that is talked about in the code to raise the tree limbs up to the 15 feet above the crown of the street. And that would be done for each maintenance area. And maintenance area four is what we, we are working on in 2021. And we went through a bid process once and we did not receive any bids. And then we learned from the vendors that they were, we had, they were busy with some other bids and we're out of state. And they said, hey, if you'll redo it, we will, we will bid. We received two bids. And in your packet, you have a bid tab and it shows that the low bidder is Alfred Superior Tree Service. And the, the base bid for area four is $28,000. And then we asked for alternates based on the diameter size of the limb because there may be some that we want to get them to trim outside of area four. And so we have those bids that are shown as alternates for each of those. The bids would be awarded based on the base bid. And you'll notice there is a significant difference between the low bid and the next bid. And we spent a lot of time talking directly to the low bidder to make sure they understood what they bid and make sure they would be honoring that. And they assured us that positively they understood and they believe they can get the, the work done here probably in the next month. They have an opening in their schedule and so we, if we get it approved tonight, we have sent contracts off and are asking them to turn them around quickly so that they can get to work. And you will start to see tree trimming happening in area four. This is within our budgeted number. And if we do have limbs that are outside of the area that we need trimmed, we'll try and group those and then call them back in to take care of those. I'm quite excited by the bids we received because this is really one of those things that has really been a point of contention with a lot of our citizens. And so we're happy that we can provide this service and that the commission chose to fund this program.
Can you share with all of us in the public what your, what our estimate was that we had budgeted for this quadrant for this year?
Yeah, I believe we had 40,000 budgeted if I remember correctly.
Okay.
And remember, that was kind of a blanket number that we would anticipate for each area. And every area is going to be a little bit different because the size is a little bit different. And the mature trees in those areas are a little bit different.
On not having had this program for a while, then there's going to be items outside of area four that will need immediate attention. So it's nice to have that wiggle room to be able to address those as we hopefully get this going and continue it on in future years.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Suzanne. So you need a motion to receive bids and award contracts to the lowest bidder?
I move, I move that we accept the low bid for the tree trimming program.
Second.
Did you get that, Denise? We got a very good. Awesome. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty. Item number seven on this evening's agenda is citizen comments. Denise, do we have anything?
No, I did not receive anything today, so we can go on.
Very good. Thank you. Alrighty. Kelly, do you have anything for us?
Just real quickly, you will see on your screen here are the upcoming events and highlights courtesy of the Newton Convention and Visitors Bureau. And also just a reminder to the city commission, everyone's favorite season, budget season, is just right around the corner for the 2022 fiscal year. There will be unique challenges as always. There are some legislative changes coming, so we will try to keep you apprised of those. Also, please remember last year you created, you adopted an ordinance that created the outside agency review committee. And we need five appointees for that committee for this year. Those are appointments that the commission can suggest and the mayor would recommend and you all would ratify. So if you have someone specifically in mind that would be great for that job, please shoot me an email, let me know. We would like to make those appointments at your first meeting in March, which is March 9th. And also on the 9th, we are incredibly hopeful that we will have that meeting in person in the commission chambers at city hall. Also, we are planning at this point in time, we're going to confirm with you, but we are hoping to do a work session beginning at 5:00 or 5:30. And that work session will be exclusively to receive annual reports from all of your partner agencies such as the library. Also, Donna will give the end of your financial report. Also, Donna will give the end of your financial report. I know we will try to do some internal annual reports that we've done for you in the past. So we will be doing those March 9th, so we will get you a specific date. So Mayor, thank you, sir. That is all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Kelly. Donna, anything?
No nothing, sir.
Chris?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Suzanne?
Yes, sir.
Denise?
No, sir.
Awesome. Thank you. Rod?
There's a, there's a rumor going around that Aldi's is building west of Oshilin's. So that, that's just part of the project on, on that side of the town. That's where the road's going in, is it not, Suzanne?
Yes, that's correct. The Wheat Ridge and Paddington project is starting. And recall that Paddington comes up there between the Turkey Red Edition and Oshilin. And I believe they're going to put their, their construction trailer over in that area because there's some power that they can tie into.
And then what, have we had any activity on the sidewalks, the sidewalk program yet?
No, we just got all of the forms and the packets and everything together and out. I believe Erin may have posted it all on the website today.
Great.
And so we haven't received anything yet because we were waiting until March 1st to roll everything out. So we're just.
I just want to keep reminding the public that we have that program available.
She's going to roll it out.
We're on a roll. That's great. That's all I had.
Lee, Ron?
Well, I just want to say I appreciate our city crews and our street maintenance departments and, and all of the folks who took care of the water breaks. And I think we just have a fabulous group of folks that works for the city. And with weather like we're having this week, I, I don't know of anybody who shouldn't have a smile on their face, and that is all.
Thank you, sir. Kathy?
I'm pretty much echo what everyone else has said. I really appreciate the city crews and very thankful for them and our PD and fire and EMS as well as all our city staff. But thank you all.
Clint?
Ditto to what everybody else has said.
Boy, don't we have a great town? I mean, it's just amazing. The community that, that is thriving here in Newton is great. You know, the roads were well maintained during our snow and it's great to see the kids out and playing. And then just, you know, a few days later, they're all out in the sunshine today. So it's just great. So hearing no other business for this evening, this meeting is adjourned.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Bye.